I'd like to call the June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one Finance Committee of the Hall to order. Roll call, please. Madam City Clerk.
Ally.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
Beltrandi.
Here.
Burns.
Here.
Figgy.
Here.
Flaherty.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Matthews Kane.
Here.
Mello.
Here.
Morganelli.
He's gonna try to make it.
Oniski.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Adams.
I have not heard from you.
No. I think Jamiro's gonna have a problem.
Yeah. All right. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for their flexibility and their understanding of the situation. The last update I got from Beacon Hill was is that the bill is in Conference Committee with the House and Senate trying to come up with an agreeable version that hopefully they will pass tonight. Governor will sign it and we can be zooming again tomorrow. So, thank you again for your patience. The first item on the agenda tonight is the City Clerk's budget and that is number one 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 one, the very first one.
That's actually City Council.
That's City Council, excuse me.
That's you guys.
So, City Council is the first one. I missed one. So, we'll do City Council first.
Okay, so the City Council budget is just mainly the salaries and then there's a purchase of service account also and that's for your legal ads, photographs. This year, we need new photographs for our new councilors, which are our councilors Adams, Matthews Kane, Mello, and Sullivan. And then also within this budget year will be an inauguration, so we will just have refreshments come out of that budget. And then any outgoing councilors' plaques or any incoming new councilors' unique plates. And that's your budget.
Thank you. Any questions from the council on the budget?
Seeing none, I would move approval as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for approval. Any discussion further?
Just I liked it last night when we had a different person making the motions. She was so much nicer.
Second.
You knew it was coming.
It's fine.
Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Ally.
Yes.
Bean.
Yes.
Beltrandi.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Figgy.
Yes.
Flaherty.
No.
Harris.
Here.
Yes.
Matthews Kane.
Yes.
Mello.
Yes.
Oniski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Now, we're ready for Madam City Clerk and that is Budget Number One One Six One, One One Six One. I feel like I'm calling bingo.
Okay.
Madam City Clerk, the floor is yours.
Sue. Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, the City Clerk budget is first of all made up of full-time salary accounts, full-time hourly accounts. The only increases were contractual increases. And then we move into the personnel, the election personnel. That actually is reduced this year because it is a city election and we are not going to have, well, we don't really know if we're having early voting for city elections. That's still part of this bill that's being debated tonight. So, I didn't put anything in there because at the time when we were doing this in February, it didn't look like that was gonna happen. I think it is part of the budget or is part of this bill tonight, so we'll see how that goes. Perhaps I will need an appropriation at that time, but we will look at that back in September and November. So, that is reduced a lot just because last year, we had fourteen days of early voting in person for the November election and seven days for the primary. So, that was reduced substantially this time. An overtime account is for the scribes that are doing the Finance and LNO committee meetings. So, that is an increase in the budget this year. Longevity and education, those are the same as last year. Those are all contractual. Purchase of services, that went down this year because this year, no, it went up actually. I'm sorry. It went up this year because it's a city election, so we're responsible to print our ballots this year. The ballots, because there are six wards, will have six different ballots, which costs a lot more for coding and for printing. So, that is what we have to pay for. Last year, the state paid for it because it was their election, so we're responsible for that this year. So, that was a major increase in that. Everything else is pretty standard. Our dog licenses, our shredding, printing of envelopes, our maintenance agreement with community code for our code on the Internet and for our software program that we use for the agendas and minutes. So, that was, that was pretty substantial. Supplies went down, that went down a little, down some because last year, we just had so many supplies that we had to buy because of cleaning, things like that. We had extra paper that we had to buy because of all the early voting and things like that. Okay, so that is, also within my budget is the board registrars. That's the board salary. And there is a purchase of service account in there and that's for the census confirmation notices in the street list books and that's just every year. We do that every year. And then also included in my budget is the licensing division and that's the board members. And the employees from the License Commission are included in the City Clerk's salary accounts. And so, that was the new size of, well, we had it last year. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the committee? Counselor Flaherty.
Yep. You mentioned dog licenses and stuff. How's the revenues looking this year because of COVID? Are we on track or are we behind?
No, we are pretty much on track. People are sending them in. We have an online, or we have a mail-in form and people are mailing them in, so they continue to mail them in all during COVID.
Okay.
So, they're pretty much staying on track.
And are our fees contemporary or are we behind on the rates on fees? Can we raise any fees?
I mean, right now, it's, they're fifteen if you're spayed or neutered, thirty if you're not, which is...
But just in general for the department, there's lots of other things you charge fees for.
Our certified copies are ten, which is, I think, pretty, pretty standard. I think Springfield's a little bit more, but people come here, if their certificate is in both places, they'll come here to get it. I think Springfield is a little bit higher, so I mean, we could look at that. We could do a survey if you'd like and get some other fees.
And just to make sure that the fees are covering the cost of the service.
Mm-hmm.
Because as wages go up, we should be adjusting fees if we have to actually invest hours to do things.
Sure. I can actually do a little, I could do a survey of just surrounding towns.
And the family history type searches.
Yeah.
Also, genealogy also take times.
We don't have a ton of that, though. So, we do charge twenty dollars an hour for any genealogy.
But that's less than you pay your people.
Yes, it is.
So, I think we should raise the price so that we make a profit.
Mm-hmm.
And include benefits, which is another thirty-one percent.
Anything else? Any other questions? Comments?
Actually, just, Mr. Chairman, it's more of a reminder for me, Karen, that, and I know some councilors talked about this, but some of the language on those ballots, because we're printing them, it's probably more of a legal question in the sense of how to declare a candidate for office. You know, right now, we're having, if one person writes in their name, they, even though maybe they didn't write their name in, it's, they declare themselves a candidate if I'm not mistaken. So, I'd like to get some legal, it's more of a reminder for you and I can talk about it further.
Okay, yeah, I'm not sure.
In some councils.
You mean the threshold for a write-in?
Correct.
Yep.
For the what?
For a write-in.
Not a write-in, it's...
Candidate.
Remember the, yeah, remember we had the ruling from Sioux Falls a couple of years back that if one person has a, there's no other candidate open for that position and if one person gets the write-in, they get the seat. Remember that happened with...
Right. Oh, okay.
Correct. I'd like to talk about that legally and see if we can make some motions to change that. If, if it's something that we can control out of a law.
Okay. I thought you meant the way their names appear on the ballot.
Yeah.
Well, there's a lot of people that doesn't, don't want it in alphabetical order.
Just me.
Well, for the preliminary, it's a drawing and then for the final election, it's alphabetical, by last name, incumbents first and then alphabetical, everybody else. So, yeah. And that's part of, that's in our charter. We have to change that.
Again, more of a reminder, that's all.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? I'd just like to say thank you for the scribes. They have made life a lot better for, I know, LNO as well as the finance, so thank you very much for that.
Yeah, I echo that. It's really got some professional meeting minutes rather than what I did.
When I like.
Or, I'd like to say, or Counselor Adams, but I can't.
They still fall short of PAC, I might just throw it.
Yeah, I would like to move that if we can, but a discussion for another time, but I'll say it anyway to, you know, maybe PAC or some other committees also. I don't like that meet all the time.
Seeing no other comments, I would move approval of the City Clerk and the Licensing Budget.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Ally.
Yes.
Bean.
Yes.
Beltrandi.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Figgy.
Yes.
Flaherty.
No.
Harris.
Yes.
Matthews Kane.
Yes.
Mello.
Yes.
Oniski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Mayor's Budget. That's Item One One Two One. One One Two One, the Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all back in your City Hall. Welcome back. My budget presentation is brief. It's not a lot of budget. I'm responsible for a couple of employees under the Mayor's Budget, including Brian Ferret, Holly Lurgio, and Michelle Moriarty, who work in my office. It's just whatever the salary was plus a two percent increase cost of living. Travel stipend is the same. I don't think that's changed. Purchase of services, very similar to last year. We don't purchase a lot of services out of the Mayor's Office, other than things like citations and cards and things like that. There's not a lot, not a lot that we pay for, there's not a lot of need. Same thing with supplies, very minimal. I think one of the things we did away with last year was ceremonial expenses. There used to be, I think, Madam Clerk, there used to be some money in the budget for helping out with inauguration ceremonies and things and that's, that's been stripped out, so there's nothing in there. Now, in-state travel is at four hundred and fifty dollars. We assume because of the pandemic, protocol's changing, there might be some more things happening in the state that we might need to travel to, but it's not a lot of money and I don't really intend to leave Westfield if I can help it. Finally, probably the largest stipend besides, or the largest item besides salaries is general expenses and that's very shocking, MMA, annual membership of eighty-five hundred dollars to the National Musical Association, subscription to the newspaper, and the license fee for Brian Ferret's license. And I think that's it, with the exception of one thing I wanted to mention. Last year, we had talked about the City Advancement Officer position, which was vacant. I had talked about how I wasn't comfortable filling the position during a time when we were probably gonna be asking other departments not to hire people. This year, though, we would like to do that. I'd like to give sixty thousand dollars in that line of numbers with the hope that we can hire a replacement to Joe Mitchell's position to work with Pete Miller, to work with the Mayor's Office, and to work with all of you, I suspect, in advancing the city and helping with the, the expanded interest there's been since COVID has declined. We're getting a lot more interest in the city and in some of the spaces that we have available to develop, so it'd be very nice to have that position filled. It's been vacant now for over a year and a half at least, so I included that in the budget. I think, I think that's it. I would just like to say thank you to, to Michelle and Holly. They're not here tonight, but I should mention that they do so much in the office. You can probably speak to them first before you even get through to me and they're tremendous employees for the city. They do a lot and they spend a lot of time going around, this is probably them now, saying thank you for documenting.
Four one three five three six two nine zero.
They do a lot and they go around the building quite a bit to make sure they know what's going on in the City Hall. So, just love to thank them. And that's all. But happy, happy to answer your questions.
Do we have any questions from the council or committee? Anybody have a question for the Mayor?
Right.
Yes, Counselor Bean.
Just the inauguration stuff, so who's, who's paying for that particular ceremony? I know there's more than one in there. Do we know who's, what department's paying for it now?
Well, I think last year, I think you guys ended up having to pay for that.
I think the clerk just said she did.
Refreshments.
Yeah. I guess there was, it's just flowers and, we usually do the vocational programs, refreshments. So, I think it's in this budget now. It's in the council budget.
Okay.
It's like a hundred and fifty dollars.
And then as far as like the Advancement Officer, obviously, I wish it was filled. We've talked about that a couple, you know, like two years ago, year and a half ago. Where, although I think it's, I just think it was, it was just a little short-sighted on not to fill the position. I can understand your rationale about, you know, other departments getting cut and asking for cuts, but even last year, I don't see departments really taking a lot of cuts.
They didn't.
I think, I think there was...
I'm gonna make a motion to cut it because...
Well, there was some, you know, and there was just...
There are positions that didn't get filled, especially in the school department, but also on the city side, but we ended up putting a budget forward that didn't cut anybody, but didn't know that at the time we were crafting the budget that we wouldn't have to cut people.
Yeah.
Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to cut sixty thousand dollars out of five one one zero 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 for the City Advancement Officer because the term of the City Advancement Officer is co-terminous with the Mayor and starting somebody on September first when there's gonna be potentially, you know, a change in mayor or the same mayor by December thirty-first, I don't think is right. I don't think it's fair for a person to start a job when they know they only have a window of three months. And you heard that same logic applied the other night when the Law Department was in here. The Law Department didn't want to have a city solicitor because it was on the same schedule as the Mayor. So, I'd like to cut sixty thousand out of five one one zero 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 and I would hope that the new mayor or if this mayor, when he get renewed, puts it back in the budget and we can fund it with savings that are, that we anticipate coming in the budget. So, for now, I'd like to cut sixty thousand from five one one zero zero zero.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to cut sixty thousand dollars. Any further discussion?
Make a motion to amend that cut to thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion been made to reduce...
I'll buy the rationale. I don't think you're gonna get anybody to take the job for that period of time, but there will be an election, so if you cut it in half, you can fund it for the second half of the fiscal year.
And I agree. I just think that there's gonna be more money that we know later in the year.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussion on the amendment to the amendment?
Yeah, well, question, just clarification. It was sixty thousand, right?
Yeah.
That was for half a year, starting nine one?
No, nine months.
No.
Oh, nine months. Okay, thank you.
Okay. First motion was cut sixty, that was amended to thirty.
It was a motion.
Right.
We have a motion.
And there is lead time when you like do this, you have to post it and hold it, so I'm fine with thirty if you want.
Yeah, I'm probably not gonna support it only, only because this position has been, I get the rationale that we probably won't find anybody, but I'd like some money there to, I mean, thirty thousand is fine, but we could get lucky, I guess, in the end. This, 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 these, there's been plenty of positions vacant and not being able to find people and, you know, I am a little concerned about that too, coming with the Personnel Department, what we're dealing with, even the DPW Director, but we, we need to, we need, there's not, there's not enough bodies in this place. There really isn't. And again, I can respect and understand why I cut it because of the timing, but I'd rather be safe than sorry at this point, so I'm probably not gonna support that.
Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you. And it's not just Westfield, this position wasn't filled in West Springfield just recently. The Westminster City Council cut out of their budget for same reasons, they couldn't fill a position.
Counselor Ally.
Thank you. Another thing is, is last year's, you're lucky to survive in business. Businesses were not expanding. March fourth, this country virtually shut down. Jobs ever sold, things that stopped. If you're in sales, manufacturing, or whatever, the numbers are like horrendous and a lot of us are lucky to have survived or held on to businesses and stuff like that. A lot of businesses didn't make it. A lot of it advantageous to have somebody pling for the city. That's a tough road to hope because it's just not there. People were not making the decisions. They couldn't throw good money after bad. They were hamstrung on all kinds of fronts. We're going to bring now with shortages, unthanks, all over the place, and the demand picking up. But last year would have been very, very tough to have somebody there and try to make a go of it, you know? Everybody just pulled back.
Okay. Any, any other discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call on the proposed cut of thirty thousand dollars, please.
Ally.
Yes.
Bean.
No.
Beltrandi.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Figgy.
Yes.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Matthews Kane.
Yes.
Mello.
Yes.
Oniski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion passes. We've cut from line item five one one zero zero zero, correct? Thank you, got that. Any other? Any other discussion or comments or proposals?
Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, I would move approval as amended to the Mayor's Budget.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded for approval as amended. Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Ally.
Yes.
Bean.
Yes.
Beltrandi.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Figgy.
Yes.
Flaherty.
No.
Harris.
Yes.
Matthews Kane.
Yes.
Mello.
Yes.
Oniski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the Auditor's Budget. Welcome Auditor Morley.
Hi.
Nice to see you tonight. Would you give the council a brief overview of your budget, please?
Sure. Our budget hasn't really changed much from last year. There are contractual increases and obligations for myself, the Assistant Auditor, and the Budget Analyst, and then the other three employees are medium contracted and those increases follow that contract, those contracts. There is overtime in here. You know, there are times when people are on vacation, whether it be accounts payable or payroll and that other clerk steps in and works a few extra hours here and there to make sure those bills get paid and the payroll gets processed. And at the same time, one of my employees will be retiring in September, so there might be some time where Kim, who would be left, might need some overtime because Peggy will be gone and we're trying to figure out the timing of that, so that potential could be used there. There is longevity for Lynn, who's been here for a very long time, and that's under her PSA. Then we have twenty-five bucks for shredding to get the shredding paper out of our office and then the audit, the annual audit with Scanlon. We have our regular annual audit and then we also have a separate piece for a single audit. And state staff, which is if you have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars over in federal funding, you have to do a single audit and with the CARES Act and the ARPA money and the FEMA money, we will definitely be doing that piece next year and they bill us by the hour. I mean, not by the hour, by the day, it's like a couple hundred bucks a day. They don't know how long it will take. They don't know, you know, we don't know how much money that will be, but we put a big chunk in there for that. The rest is basically, you know, paper, toner, office supplies, mileage to go to conferences and meetings. You know, as the Mayor alluded to, we're hoping that they'll have the annual Accountants Conference, which is in March at UMass. They also have some stuff in Devon's during the year that, you know, Shelley and I could potentially go to. Then there's the MMAA memberships for myself and Shelley. And then there's some money there for some small equipment. It really is helpful when you have dual monitors, especially in the accounting world, and two of my employees have 3D monitors from the IT Department, but they're much smaller than a current monitor, so I'm gonna get them new monitors so that the two are the same size to, they can kind of match up. But that's basically what's in there.
Thank you.
So, it'd be basic.
Any questions from the committee? Any questions from the councilors? Counselor Flaherty.
Scanlon's in here. Could we get Scanlon to come in here for a meeting in September? Can you just give a heads up that I'll probably ask him that?
Okay. Yeah, I had emailed him about a question earlier. Normally, he will give us a list of audit adjustments for the year-end and I haven't seen those yet, but I haven't heard from him, which is kind of strange, so I have to follow up with him. We do have those reports. We posted those, but I'm assuming like the auditors I worked with in Southampton will come in and me and go over the audit report and the management letter and all that kind of stuff, so I'll, they'll check with them.
I haven't talked, I talked to the OPEC guy and he's willing to come in, but if you talk to Scanlon, just ask him.
Yeah.
You know, we have some stuff in long-range finance that we'd like him to come in and address.
Okay, sure.
In probably September, before the first meeting or the first and second September.
Yeah, okay. I can do that easy enough.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of the Auditor's Budget as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Ally.
Yes.
Bean.
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Biggie?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is flood control. That is item one two nine nine. One two nine nine. Chairman, did you hear?
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
So, our budget is, there's a couple items that the mayor cut out. As you can see on the budget, we got a pretty substantial increase in budget requests in prior years to kind of offset decades of neglect. We're trying to facilitate multiple things that need to be done, things that have been identified by the Army Corps of Engineers, things that have been identified by the US NRCS, things that have been identified by the Office of Dam Safety, and by inspections that we've had through time, bottomed required under federal and state requirements for Armbrook and Audenbrook flood control dams. There's a lot of issues that require engineering studies because all of these sites involve wetlands and riparian areas, which involves CONCOM, so it gets quite expensive. We have repairs of Little River Levy that we have to make because the levee has a substantial issue, which all of you are aware of. And as we drag that out, it only deteriorates worse. With the budget request, we have some, some hard choices to make as to what we're going to be able to do and what we're not going to do. The intent was to try to perform a bunch of engineering analysis work, that's why the engineering one was so high, so we can kind of get a baseline of what those costs would be, because we really don't know what costs are all these repairs are going to be, and we can't present them to the city council or mayor without an idea of what they cost. So that was the intent of this budget. What we have is, generally, what we're going to have to focus on is our basic expenses that we've had every year, the mowing and grooming contract, which is up for renewal, which we have to do. We have to mow and groom, and in prior years, we didn't do a good job of it, which is why we have all these trees in brush growing on all of our flood control structures that have been identified to be removed by these federal and state agencies. We have, we're looking at getting animal control, because one thing we're supposed to do is remove rodents that burrow into the levees and dams because they're earth instructors. We haven't had a meeting, the Flood Control Commission hasn't had a meeting to decide what we're going to do, what we're not going to do, to come up with the ninety thousand. But it's understandable. We had a very sizable request, the mayor did give us finances to more than what we've had in prior years, and one of the largest additions to our budget was the hundred and twenty thousand dollars to acquire the six parcels at Little River Levy that the city was supposed to purchase many, many years ago through a local cooperation agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers. So that's pretty much our budget. The only other thing is, is a part-time employee that we asked for, which isn't going to be, it was cut, and I understand the city finances, but from a flood control perspective, and my own burdens, you can see on my face, I'm exhausted. I spend many nights, evenings, lunches, breaks, doing flood control work. So it's very wearing on myself and very wearing on both of my commissioners because we're facilitating a lot of things, and we just need the staff to do it, so. And that's pretty much our budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the committee? Any questions from the council? Counsel Flaherty?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for all you guys do. I think you're the lowest hourly paid employee in the city, if you added up your effort. Truly, he's making nine hundred dollars a year, and he's in charge of, you know, millions of dollars of projects, potentially protecting billions of dollars of land, and I think we certainly should give you the tools you need to do the job right and protect our city. So I'm very disappointed to see these cuts, we've been talking about them for many years, and it's something that should be a priority, and we have to find a way to do it. So I've submitted a motion for Thursday night to try to get you the money back, and I think we have to find a way to make these things a priority. There's, you know, a hundred and fifty million dollars in budget this year, there's no reason we can't find a hundred thousand dollars to fix something so important, so. I'm going to keep pushing for that, and I, you know, I thank you and your team, I saw, he just stepped out, oh, no, get back there, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, and John who left.
John, I saw John.
Counsel Ally?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I toured the Little River Levy this year, and if you haven't been out there, you need to go out there. It's a mess. You've got sizable trees that, when they go, they, you've ever seen a tree go over, you know, there's, there's no place for a tree. You can't put a tree on a little tiny hill, and it just takes things out. You have trees in the river, which, you know, you're building dams as it is, but when these trees go, they just pull out huge chunks. We've all seen a tree go over in normal circumstance. This is really not the place to put a tree to begin with, and it leaves it, it's devastating. The amount of trees that are down is really nothing to support, and these trees have got to be like fifty, seventy-five years old. These are good sized trees, these are little trees that, you know, they didn't mow last year, and they got a little tree growing. These things are significant, and the number of them that are down is a mess, all down by Amelia Park, you know, take a walk down there. We're an accident looking for a place to happen, and we're not even addressing it, you know. Those trees have got to come out of it, you know.
Counsel Bean?
Just a process question, more or less, and guys, the commissioner, I really appreciate the work that you guys do there, it is obviously a lot of time and effort.
Thank you.
How does, how does that trigger work in that sense? And I guess, I thought I knew, but is the money, because we have money in the flood budget, I'm assuming engineering has some monies at times for these kind of things?
It depends on the three of the residual. There's nothing budgeted.
Right. And is there, does the commission okay funds to be spent?
Yes. I physically sign, we vote, and I physically sign for those budgets, for those votes to be spent. It's our commission.
So I guess that's the question I have, is that, is that right?
What's written in the?
Is that what it is? Like, is it, and I, I'm just talking process, I'm just trying to figure that out.
For the flood control money, is that be right? I mean, he can only spend what his budget is.
Right.
I mean, otherwise, the auditor's going to tell him no, but.
But that, that three-person board still is the triggers to purchase or, you know,
They're the ones that are going to be responsible for awarding through purchasing the, you know, the mowing contract, they have to vote it.
I mean, because for years, it's been nothing in that budget. So it was just, you know, and I, and I know, Mark and I have talked about some projects through the years, and obviously, there's a lot of stuff that needs to happen, so I'm just curious how money actually gets pushed.
If I may, I know that engineering has funded some of our projects because we don't have enough yet. DPW has funded some projects, city council gave money to DPW to fix our drainage pipes at Lloyd's Drive Way flood station. We just don't have.
But you, you guys don't okay those, right? That stays with the certain departments?
It does, but it being a flood control structure that we're responsible for, you draw whatever conclusions you want, but our commission physically doesn't have the money to make the repairs.
Correct.
So, but we're the body that's responsible for these structures, in the way that.
Yeah, understood.
Yep, understood.
So, okay.
I don't know.
Counsel Mello?
Thank you. I'd like to know a couple things, and thank you very much, Al, for all the information that you have shared, and for all the teching up that you have helped me do about flood control structures in the city. I would like to know how many other commissions in the city have no staff at all, and every administrative task is left to the chair, and have multimillion dollar projects, four of them coming up. I would like to know why we are not prioritizing the flood control that is literally protecting the new construction at the Boys and Girls Club. I would like to know why it's okay to spend seven hundred thousand dollars for the pipe down Lloyd's Hill, but it's not okay to spend a hundred thousand to fix a problem that's thirty years old. I have a problem with this budget, and I, I totally trust what the Flood Control Commission tells me about how the city works and the water that moves through it, and what I don't trust is us sitting here and saying yes to a budget that clearly leaves us in danger. And so I, I totally appreciate all the work you do, but I'm going to vote no on this budget. I think it is atrocious that we actually have a dangerous situation, and we're not doing anything about it. Thank you. Also, if I could have the answer to how many other commissions have no staff, please?
I, I don't know. I have no idea.
Historic, cultural arts. There's a few out there.
There's a few.
Not.
None responsible for safety.
Right.
If I may.
Sure.
Say one more thing. So, just so everyone's aware, because it seems there's a lot of confusion where my commission sits in the city ordinances, we're under chapter thirteen, which is planning and development, so we seem to be orphaned out here somewhere, but we, it's clearly what we're supposed to be part of, and we have, the flood plan management district is one of the things we're supposed to oversee, is the permitting in the flood plans, which is another thing that we tried to address, and it's kind of been cast off again, but I don't have staff to even look at permitting issues. So it, I have to physically chase all that stuff down, and I don't have, I mean, I've printed, I don't even know how many rooms of paper just this year, and it's been interesting to try to get paid for that. I can't do it, I guess, after this year, so. And it's no fault of the auditor or anyone else in purchasing, it's just that's the city ordinances are. So it would help, be helpful if I had actual staff to do this day-to-day work, because I can't sit at the courthouse on my lunch and talk on the phone while I'm on duty, I have to do it during my breaks, and I can't spend every night up till two o'clock in the morning trying to do emails and type up stuff and have my wife ready to divorce me, so. I was just.
Counsel Flaherty?
Thank you very much. You know, I think you should have the staff person available to you, either in the engineer or DPW departments, and make it part of their job responsibility, I think that's the solution. Or planning, or planning, they're planners, they're not operations guys, and these guys need operational engineers and people like that.
Yeah, but that's where they're, in the ordinance, I mean, that wouldn't make the sense, but what you're saying makes total sense, it needs to be where it is, but maybe there's a disconnect between the ordinance and what, and reality.
It's been way too long, and we're playing with fire, we really are, it's, you know.
Right. And I'm more than willing to talk about how to find a better solution, because we have a few.
Well, I think it's a grossly unfair solution to have you do this for nine hundred dollars a year, you know, it's not right at all, it really isn't, especially for how important it is.
And that is part of the reason why the historical lack of things in flood control were, because prior chairs even weren't available to do it, or didn't know what to do, and I've been playing catch-up, because there's reports that have to be filed, there's other things that have to be done to respond to, like, say, Army Corps, I have to report to them three times a year, like.
And it's a good thing that you're so young.
And contact them.
Good thing that you're so young and have all that energy. We had Henry doing this for you, I mean.
I know.
Is Henry back there?
No, no, I don't think.
Henry's there. Or no, Jen, sorry, Henry resigned.
Henry resigned, and.
I'm thinking Henry's here, because he usually is.
Henry Walco and Lumley both resigned on you, right? And I'll tell you, that, there goes a ton of experience and knowledge and background, and they, they were troopers to be able to hang in as long as they did, and we really appreciate their service to the city.
Counsel Mello?
I just wanted to add that with Powdermill, Graft flood control dam, Armbrook flood control dam, Westfield, the river levy, right, with the new, quite past, multi-use pass going there, and the rehab of Little River Levy, which we don't even own yet, so we can't rehab, they need a coordinator, like, somebody needs to answer the phone, we've got four major projects going on, somebody needs to answer the phone when everybody else is at work, I don't understand the problem. I don't want to hear spending about once until this is taken care of. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any, any other questions or comments from the council?
I have a question.
Yes, Counsel Harris?
It would appear that this really should be under engineering, and part of the engineering department.
Well, that makes sense, and I would hope that the mayor and his leadership team will take a look at this and see what they can do, because I know there's been efforts in the past to have things addressed that just seem to have fallen off the table and haven't been picked back up. So that would be something I would encourage the mayor and his staff to look at, see what they could do to help out in this situation, yes?
Just to add to that, there's also the emergency management component to what we do, because what we do doesn't do anything, it just sits there idle until there's emergency. And I have coordinated with Steve quite a bit over the last year, and that's some of the things we've talked about, so there's, we kind of fit into several different slots, kind of overlap, so I don't know if necessarily engineering is exactly where it needs to be, but definitely, there's an engineering component to it.
Well, what I would hope is there'd be a dialogue to try to figure out where and how, and how you can get support, because I agree with Counsel Flaherty, that's not something a commission, for nine hundred dollars, a commission should be doing, so.
So would I.
Counsel Sullivan?
I would, I would echo that, I would just caution that wherever the appropriate place to move it is, there needs to be resources added to that department, you can't just ask departments to do more with the same amount of money, because that just isn't going to work. We're to the point where we're doing less with less, we're not doing more with less. So if it, wherever it goes, whether it's engineering or DPW, although I don't know about adding that to the job description of the person that we're trying to hire, makes much sense these days, but my only point is, it isn't just a matter of moving this, this function, because that's really what's been going on as it is, and clearly, it would appear that people want to do things differently, you need to create the resources wherever it goes.
Fair enough. Mr. Mayor?
Let me add too, we have had meetings about this, well, actually, we had meetings about ARPA, and about what to do with the resources that come in from the federal government. Clearly, we think that levees and dams fit into one of the categories that ARPA is for, for cities and towns to spend money on. So we have put together some lists, engineering and DPW, water and sewer, and we've talked about, you know, what we would do if we did get the money, and I think one of the things we're hoping to do is spend some of that to help Al with, with some of the work he has to do. The permits we did, not the permits, the land acquisition we put into the budget, but this is extra, this is for projects that need to happen. Now, is it millions of dollars? No, we could spend millions of dollars, but there'd be no other money left in ARPA for anything else, but it will be a piece of that that we hope to be able to use.
And I'd like to add that Representative P reached out to us and requested our priorities, and I listed the pump stations and flood control as my number-one priority within the city, but I'm just one person, and I know there's a whole city here that has other priorities, but the ARPA money is pretty much targeted for infrastructure, and waterways and dams and levees are part of infrastructure, so it's, it looks from what I've been able to gather from attending my MMA meetings, is that that will be a covered expense, so it's my hope that we can address some of these issues, because as Counsel Flaherty said, it's just a time bomb waiting to explode, and we don't want that headline, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. One more time?
Yep, well, because he, he just brought up a project that I, I'm asked for. So the work that you're asking for now is engineering work to get ready for those other things, is the way I understood what you said earlier, but then there's also a follow-up, like, how much, how many millions of dollars do you have to invest to fix these things? And I thought we're in the ten, fifteen million dollar local side of things, for all those projects.
No, for Armbrook and Powdermill, yes, but for Little River Levy, additional work, there is some work that we have to do preliminarily for Armbrook and Powdermill that NRCS has been asking us to do, such as fix the gate valves on the drainage towers, which are inoperable. Well, one might be operable, but they want us to do some preliminary work before they go in there, and it's been a problem, like, they had a diver that had been going to inspect, and they were trying to figure out how to get water down in Armbrook, because, in Armbrook reservoir, because they didn't want to send a diver in with water pouring in on the stand, it's dangerous, and there was an interesting situation with that. But these are things that need to be done preliminarily, and additionally, again, our idea was to have all these issues, that little issues that we have, and we don't have time here to go into them, look at these issues, have engineers look at them, find out what it's going to take, what permits we need, because there's federal, state, and local permits that we need, get cost analysis done, we'll have an idea of exactly what we need to do, so I'm not pulling numbers out of space like I typically try to do when people ask me questions, because I don't have real numbers, I have guestimates.
But those guestimates run at ten to fifteen million dollars, if I'm not right, from that engineer guy that came to talk to us, right?
Well, yes.
For capital, for our capital plan.
Right, yes, I'm not, yes, that's correct, I wasn't sure what you were referring to. So, yes, that's thought, a ballpark thought, of what it would cost.
Because I'm trying to get them to understand that the ARPA money.
Yes.
May not cover what we really need.
Right.
So we still have to do that.
And the other thing is, is these things would also put us in a state that we're close to being shovel-ready for a project with grants, there's going to be a lot of grants coming from FEMA and other agencies, I'm aware of them, because I get communication from FEMA, I'm also on the SER team with emergency management, so I, I was getting it before that, but I get all this stuff, plus, as you see on our stuff, there's stuff for training, that was for memberships to Mass FM, which is Mass Flood Management, which is an association here in the state that was started a few years ago through FEMA, so it provides training to us and lots of contact information, and the Army Corps is involved, NRCS is involved, Office of Dam Safety is involved, and other groups throughout the state and other municipalities are involved, so everybody's kind of networking and talking, because it's not just an issue here, it's an issue across the Commonwealth, where flood control has been generally neglected across the Commonwealth, where if you go to other states that have, have had more recent flooding issues, all this, like, New York was one of those states where they were caught off guard, oh, hey, we probably need to really look at this, because we haven't looked at it in thirty, forty years, so anyway. So, yeah, we need to have some cost analysis work done. One of the things we were hoping to have done this year is emergency action plans for all of our flood control sites, to bring them all up to current date, emergency action plans are exactly that, and those plans would go to satisfy requests that we've had from Army Corps, from NRCS, actually, not requests, but demands, to get these things updated, Office of Dam Safety, and some of them are old, some of them don't exist, and our emergency manager needs them, so we can get an emergency action plan for the city together. So it kind of says what you need to do in emergency for each one of these facilities and how you handle it, and then our emergency manager can take that and say, okay, here's our master plan, which we don't have. So it's all pieces of a giant piece, jigsaw puzzle.
It is a big jigsaw puzzle.
It is.
Nope.
Any other questions?
So, understanding we cannot add to the budget, Mr. Chairman, I would move approval as the flood commission's budget as presented.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, roll call, please.
Ally?
No.
Bean?
No.
Belchandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Biggie?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Absolutely not.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Again, thank you for all the work you do, it is appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the engineering budget, that's item one four one one.
That's item 1411.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Thank Henry.
Thanks, Chuck.
You're up for that. The budget pretty much is level funded from last year with the exception of the construction line item. And that's specifically done in that way so that the mayor and city council can be discreet with the amount of investment we're going to be doing with infrastructure monies. Not knowing then exactly what does get funded and what work is going to be involved in those projects that do get funded, we load the money into construction, and then you'll see that we do have a process of transferring construction to the appropriate account that auditing tells us whatever details of the effort involved that they should actually come out. So you see, there's a lot of transfers to purchase of services. There's various other nuances anyways. But that's the dynamic behind it so that the mayor and city council can focus on the level of effort that they are looking to fund through the department. So the only line item that's really been adjusted, other than contractual items for personal services, again, is the construction line item. We had requested around $3 million. The mayor had used discretion and submitted only about $1.5 million to the city council. And so a number of projects have been identified. In that, in our request for the $3 million, and we'll have to use our best effort to see what can be done, we are looking and have had discussions to try to supplement the effort with ARPA funds, and we'll continue to do that as well.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Any questions from the councilors? Council Flaherty.
For the construction account, do those projects, P's, what you consider capital projects?
I would say so, yeah, they're infrastructure improvements.
So theoretically, we could use stabilization funds, maybe, if we wanted? Without having to.
Well, I would, so there's, I would suggest to, and I have, to the mayor and city council that these are infrastructure investments. These are something that you need to do on an annual basis. They're not something that you want to do through a capital improvement program. You don't want to do long-term borrowing for this. This should be annual appropriated monies because it's an annual expense. If you try to do this through capital planning, you're going to end up paying two or three times.
So these are street, like, these are street maintenance type things? They're not longer term?
Well, they're not necessarily maintenance. I mean, when you go and replace a road, I mean, you're structurally improving the road. It's an infrastructure investment. But, I mean, certainly, you could bond for it. But if you look at the finances of it, if you're doing that every year.
Not bonding, stabilization. We have a lot of money in stabilization. Last year, we put an extra $4 million in there.
That's totally the city council's, or mayor of the city council's.
Thank you.
Well, we already did take $1 million out of stabilization for road projects, so.
It's a lot easier, Sal, for me to take that stabilization if it's capital improvement, when we have the money and we need money for other things like we just heard.
Yep.
Severance line item has zero in it, is that the plan?
You what?
Severance line item has zero in it.
You'll find that certain staff members are fully funded for the year. So depending on what happens, that's always, it's never nailed down until the event occurs. And then typical city scenario is that you use that line item, you pay the severance transfer out of that, and then you hire one that monies are available. I don't mean to tell the city council how to handle that. It's really not a good business plan, but it's history. So that's where we're at. So that item is fully funded. No, there isn't anything in severance.
It's fully funded through this 51100 account, the payroll account.
Typically, that's the way it goes.
Thank you.
Council Mello.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Can you elaborate on what Old Town Meadows is, so I'm not familiar?
So the, back when we were looking to do the Ashley Street School, the Ashley Street, Cross Street, we looked at the neighborhood to do an enhancement so that we could expedite students to the new school. We could expedite the traffic down Cross Street. And then whilst we were looking at the roadway as far as congestion and as far as pavement management, we looked at all the infrastructure underneath, any water improvements or drainage. So we looked at the, what was known as Loserville neighborhood, and then across Main Street was Meadows neighborhood. That went by the wayside with the Ashley Street School. But the pavement condition on the Meadows portion, which is George Frederick Park side, is really deteriorating to a point that we need to address it. We need to address the infrastructure under the road as well. So that's what we're referring to in that whole.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Council Oniski.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I noticed on the construction account, you've got $2,950,000.
Those are requests. That was our request to the mayor.
The mayor, the mayor.
Then cut it.
Cut it.
Okay, so it is $1 million, all right, sorry, $1,450,000. Okay, now, everything showing up in the construction account adds up for much more than that. So which are the ones that are in there? Which ones aren't?
That'll be something we're going to use that discussion with. And again, we are looking to supplement to make up the cuts with the ARPA funds if possible. Thank you.
Council Sullivan, just one quick question for Mark. And it's something that just came up when we had the Fed's request to earmark those pocket projects we always talk about, things that you've been really good about having ready just in case funding has happened. This last run of things was, there was only kind of one on that list. Are we preparing some of those projects moving forward? I'm not looking for a list of projects, I'm more looking for.
Sure. I mean, so we had, so correct me if I'm wrong, but the one project you're speaking of, I believe, is the West River 11. And so that did get favorably recognized by the congressman's office for earmark. But then they turned around and said, well, that, there needs to be a 20% match. And typically, if it's a TIP-funded project, a transportation improvement program fund project through the region, Mass DOT funds that. Well, I think, you know, all this federal funding that's coming into the Commonwealth gives the Commonwealth Mass DOT a problem in that if they're supposed to do a 20% match, well, they're doing a match to what they expect in federal funds. Now, there's all this more. Where do they come up with that? I mean, and they're already hurting for, so it's an issue. So we had to step back from the earmark because Mass DOT couldn't step up to say, yes, we have the 20% match. And the city wasn't in a position to say, well, we were asking for $6 million for the project, a $1.2 million commitment on the city side. It was like, no, we'll just wait until it goes through the TIP process and let the state pay that $1.2 million rather than the city. But that puts us out five or six years before you see that project. So obviously, with sunset in mind, I'd rather see some movement on that than has the request for the earmark. But the question, I believe, was, okay, that was one. What else do we have? We are working at, on trying to resolve the congestion at Interchange 3. And we've done a number of sort of high-priority projects at larger that I believe you're aware of, that we have talked about. Interchange 3, we have talked about.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not looking for, you know, I mean, I know that projects can change to, on a moment, too. I wasn't looking for that. I was just more concerned about having that ability. In recent years, we've had several kind of ready. You know, I know when the Obama money came up, and the Green Project was one of those deals, and the infrastructure underneath. So that was great, and I applaud you for that.
Thank you.
It takes a lot of time and effort and patience, so. I was just hoping that we are moving forward with some of that.
We are moving forward with several, with other projects, but that one is the farthest along.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Council Flaherty?
I see Union Street on here, too. I take it that's for the, and it closes to North Island?
Yes.
And?
Dan House.
Yeah, so.
Run it. Go.
It's the road that doesn't, the road's taking a, you can feel it in the road as trucks go through now.
Yeah.
The guy collapses.
I don't want to talk about gardens, but the vibrations help the plants grow.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
I've heard that.
Jumping beans.
But we, no, if we don't have the flood control fixed, that's one of the flood control areas, so I think we should do flood control first. I drive that Union Street section all the time.
We're going to.
And the lights at Springdale and Union seem to be timed instead of activated by motion. Is there a way to make them so that either they're blinking during the day when there's not people queued up, or there's motion detectors so that?
No, to my knowledge, there's motion detectors on the approaches of Springdale and Paper Road. But you're saying there's nobody sitting there and the lights?
Yeah, there's a light, yeah, and sometimes the lights trigger.
I'll have to look at that.
Yeah. And there are many, you know, times during the day where you truly don't need the lights there. If they were blinking, it would be perfectly fine. It's just that those, the morning and afternoon rush hours, when things queue up.
I appreciate that.
Oh, John, Sean saying no?
I'm not sure that's a great idea.
I vote serious no on that. That's got to be the most dangerous intersection in the city.
If you solve a major problem, if you have a problem with waiting an extra minute at the light, because it's, you're looking, you're in the wrong direction. That intersection is much better now the way it is now.
Just because of accident?
Yep.
If a car goes into flashing lights, you let your parking ambulance in a tow truck.
The reason the, the reason the stop signs flashed was because the family who had a family member die and paid for those, as well as the ones.
Well, that's the top.
Yeah, but down, and the other side, it's, it's much better. I, it's a little weirdly aligned, I'll give you that.
Yeah, and where, in rush hour, it's really quite a delay.
Well, I mean, has that been recent history or prolonged? Because they did make a tweak like a week or so ago, and it did cause some delays. And so they corrected that back to where it was. So hopefully, that's not going to continue.
Well, I see the fire police guys looking at me straight. They've been there, so, but yeah, I drive through it all the time.
Prefer to the X, prefer to the X.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions for engineering budget?
Seeing none, I would move approval of the engineering budget as presented.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Roll call, we have a city court.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Beltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthew Skane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mark.
Thank you all.
I look forward to talking about ARPA with you.
Yeah.
Council Burns, you got the next one?
You're going to take fire, aren't you?
You're doing fire? All the suns in your room?
He wants business cards added to the budget.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is the fire budget. That's number 1220. Chief, glad to see you here tonight. You want to give us an overview, please?
Absolutely. But you can't talk about the fire budget without talking about the ambulance budget. So I'm going to kind of go together with that in the beginning, if that's okay. But the first thing I'd like to say is, I'm extremely proud of the men and women of the Westfield Fire Department. They came to work every day during COVID. We didn't have a choice. The citizens were counting on us. During that time, many of my men and women had voluntarily self-quarantined from their own families. They would work the ambulance, work on the fire trucks. The fire apparatus went with the ambulances on a lot of these calls, exposed themselves to COVID, and would have to go home to their families and would go in a separate area of the house and really not be able to hug their significant others or their children. So I just want to say I'm very proud of them. They came to work every day because they had to, and I'm very proud to lead this department. So the fire, the fire department budget, like I said, it can't, you can't really say leave it with just fire versus ambulance. Because last year, when I came in front of the finance committee as a whole, we were at Zoom at the time, I had, I had said that I needed to go and put five people into the ambulance budget for that year. We were in the middle of COVID, there was about a $350,000, I'm sorry, $350,000 cut to my budget. And because of COVID, I couldn't lose any people, and that would have been about five people. So I had said that I was going to put it back, those five people back into the fire budget in this fiscal year. After speaking with the mayor and the auditor, they, as you know, it's up to the mayor, and the mayor decided to keep those people in the ambulance budget this year. So that's what we did. So my fire budget is level funded as I was asked to do, except for cost of living and contractual races. Contractual part of my budget.
No additional individuals moved over to the ambulance account?
No.
Other than the five? The others, I know, what is there now, 24?
There's 25.
Five?
25. And that being said, that the ambulance budget, like I said, you have to look at both of them. I know I have disagreements with some city councilors on this, but the ambulance budget 20 years ago didn't exist. There was no enterprise fund. And we have the same amount of people on the department today as we did 20 years ago. But we have 25 people that are getting paid ambulance receipts, which are from insurance companies rather than the taxpayer. The taxpayers, I guess it's the way you look at it, the taxpayers are not paying with their tax money for these 25 individuals, the ambulance fund is. Our overtime money also. Overtime money is 100% out of the ambulance budget. Taxpayers are not paying for overtime for the fire department, for firefighters. So I'm going to thank Frank O'Brien, like I did last year, and Counselor Sullivan for having the insight and to look at the future. I mean, look where we are now, 20 years later, and what we've taken out the taxpayers' backs with this ambulance enterprise. I would say, Auditor Morrell, would you say that the ambulance enterprise account was healthy?
Yes, so the ambulance receipts reserve is technically the accounting name for it. And as most people have already known, you can't take out what you, you can't take out what you don't already have, kind of like free cash. You can't take more than free cash than you already have been approved for. So I believe the revenues for FY '21, currently, they're only posted through the end of May because the most ambulance receipts are on a live from an insurance company, so it's not quite up to date. So it looks like it will be the same, if not more, than FY '20. And if the budget is, I think the budget is pretty substantial to, you know, in line with what was there last year, we should have enough money in that fund to cover what the chief has budgeted for this year. We have to, because we don't have a choice. We can't budget if we don't have the money to take out of the receipts reserve to budget for it, so. But it looks good. Said the revenues are there, they'll be left with extra revenues. I shouldn't say extra, but other revenues. You know, there's always a timing lag, so in FY '21, you might get some 20 that are in there that can be appropriated for other items that may need that the ambulance fire department may need later, so.
And there, we have another large amount of money that's going to be going at the end of the month. About five years ago, we started what's called doing a reimbursement, which is called the Ambulance Certified Public Expenditure Program. Medicaid and Mass Health do not pay very well. They do not pay like the insurance companies pay. For instance, I think Medicare itself, it would have had about $1.3 million of billable calls last year, and they gave us about $300,000 out of the $1.3 million. So this CPE program allows us to work with the state of Massachusetts, and we've done it now, like I said, the last five years. I've done it the last, this will be my third year working on it. And we're expecting somewhere around $200,000 in the next couple of weeks before the fiscal year ends, and it'll go directly into the ambulance enterprise account. So we're expecting that. But I kind of went from fire. But I, I kind of went from fire. So fire is level funded from last year, except for cost of living and contractually obligated things that we had to do.
Thank you. Any questions on the fire budget? Councilor Bean?
So Chief, obviously, I'm one of the city councilors that had some issues.
I wasn't pointing fingers.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand, I understand. I, I, I just don't think it's gonna last the way it lasts, or the way it's built. If there's, you know, we're seeing that ambulance account rise dramatically. Insurance companies will get their piece sooner or later, and we will have a massive deduction in that account down the road. I'm not gonna predict the future, I have no idea where this is gonna be. This was a one-time event, it should have happened. We sat in that room, and I was very leery about adding more positions in there, because I've been here for 18 years, and that number keeps going up and up and up. Now, I, I really think that people just don't want to make the hard decision. Now, I guess let me ask a couple of questions. One, was it the mayor's decision to keep the five in the ambulance account? Did you present a budget to him with five less?
We had a conversation prior to my meeting with the auditor and the mayor, and the mayor asked me to keep those five to build my budget based on those five people staying in the ambulance side of the budget.
And was the commission aware of the budget itself? Did they have an opportunity to review and?
The commission really doesn't review the budget.
Past practices show that the commission abused the budget.
Not in the last five years, at least.
I don't, I don't know if that's true or not. So all I would say is that I, I'm not looking to cut. I'm very leery. I'm not gonna be a lone guy in this, but I'm very leery about five more positions staying within that budget. I think it's just poor budget, budgeting on that side, and it's just something that, I, I, I said this last time, and we were promised.
Unfortunately, I'm not, I made a promise that I couldn't keep.
I, I understand, I understand. I, I just, I'm, I'm just concerned. It's the bottom line, these insurances changed their reimbursement rates, and we got, we're, we're cutting people from this. And I think in the end, it's just, you know, shirking the responsibility and moving a problem down the road. And I don't see any light inside, in, in, at the end of the tunnel here with this. You're talking to somebody who's never cut the fire department, ever, have said yes more times than I can count. I'm very concerned about this. 25 people in that ambulance account is way too many. It's way too many. And I think in the end, people don't want to make the hard decision on this one. And managing it over the course of the year might have been the way to handle it, rather than waiting until the last minute to see if this is something we can do or not do. That's really my only problem with the budget. Men and women in the fire department have served the city rescue great, and I would never, you know, put them at risk, but this particular one is that we should find a way to take those five positions and move it on the city side round in many ambulance side. I don't know how to do that. I've looked through the budget. It's difficult, I know it is, but we need, we need to start thinking about that. So outside of that, I'm fine with the budget.
Councilor Flaherty?
So I'm gonna agree with you, and I know how to do it, and you'll see on Thursday night. So I think you should put the five people back and pay for benefits out of the ambulance fund, which will lower the benefit costs in the city, and leave enough resources in the city to hire the five people back and pay for the flood control that we just referred about earlier, and the master plan that's still needed. So you all see that on Thursday's agenda. I've asked for you to, these employee costs who are in here are just the labor costs, there's no benefit costs. When you add the benefit costs in here, it's about $800,000 at the 24-person number. That $800,000 easily covers the $350,000 you need for fire. Plus, gives Al the money he wants and potentially takes care of the master plan. So alls I need is a little help from the mayor and the city council, and we can make it happen without costing a whole lot of money, as long as you have enough money in that ambulance reserve account. So it's gonna be close.
I think it's gonna be tough to fight an $800,000 bucks.
That's what I'm starting with, though. And you know how boats go, sometimes people boat a little bit less. But if we have a goal in mind, that's the, the money is there, and it's there on a regular basis because we've spent it on other things like fire trucks, and overtime, and lots of other things. So it's just a matter of making the choices that we want to do.
Yep.
So, and I also, I want to hop on, you mentioned commissions, and we've talked about this offline, but I believe any department is run by a commission. The commission should approve the budget and should be here when the budget is presented, so that they can talk about what their goals are as a commission before we consider these kind of things. You know, so we're, we don't have anybody from fire, I don't know if this, maybe, I'll tell you, too.
Oh, not Anthony.
Oh, you're just getting a practice? Oh, boy.
He's taking notes.
Oh, boy, see, somebody doing their homework.
Yeah.
But yeah, the commissioners should be here, you know, for as many departments as, that are run by commissions, I think. So, thank you very much, and a great job for your team during COVID.
Thank you.
Any other questions for these two? Councilor Burns?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just a question on the vehicles this year, any that are in your region.
So we have, we, in my, in the budget, in the fireside of the budget, there is about $59,000, which is the last payment on the last five vehicles and the boat that we got. So that's all, that's in this last budget, so after this year, we won't have a payment. And the ambulance budget went down by about $149,000 because we made our last payment on the 2017 Pierce Velocity fire truck that we paid out of the ambulance fund also. So we don't have anything in this budget, but that being said, we're gonna be looking for a fire truck in fiscal year '23 or '23. We are on a five-year program on getting a fire truck, so whatever anybody wants to do with the ambulance fund, but they think that if we can't use the ambulance fund to purchase the fire truck like we did the last time, which was about $750,000, it'll have to be paid for by taxpayers on the fireside of things. So you might be able to pay for benefits, but you're not gonna be able to pay for the fire truck. That's not my call. I, I just come to the city council, and I ask for money, and I say, I need a fire truck. So we have an aging fleet that we constantly, every five years, we get a new apparatus, so that's gonna be coming up, and.
That's like 150 a year for five years.
What's that?
150 a year for five years.
Depending on how you do about it. But the fire truck is a lot more money than it was in 2017. We're probably looking at about $800,000 to $850,000. We were able to do it last year, doing a, a five-year lease. I think when we did the tower, it was a seven-year lease. So we're able, because we make it a first response vehicle, we have a compartment with it that has paramedic here, we have paramedics on it. We're allowed to, the auditor, the state auditor, allowed us to buy this fire truck using that, but any of the equipment on the fire truck actually has to be paid for out of the fire budget. They won't allow us to buy any equipment. So let's say you have an $800,000 fire truck out of the, paid for out of the enterprise account, we would be asking for about $80,000 to equip that with new hose and jaws of life and things like that.
So, so generally, you lease vehicles now?
We've been leasing vehicles for probably the last eight to 10 years.
Except the ambulance?
Except for the ambulances. We actually were leasing the ambulances, but this, last year, you folks allowed me to pay for them cash. And part of that, part of the reason why the ambulance fund for Vicki is looking at the $800,000 is because we paid for two ambulances cash, and we don't have that payment, which is normally over three years.
And also, lease, lease is like a misnomer, too. It's like, you're not like just leasing and then hand it back.
No, no, it's a lease, it's a lease.
Right.
It, it makes sense, it makes sense.
Zero percentage.
Uh, no, it's not zero percentage, but it is, it's, between, working with the purchasing director, it is well worth it to do the lease.
Yeah. I'm a strong proponent of leasing. Any vehicle's gonna be around more than three years, so.
And fire trucks are generally around for about 25.
Twenty, 25, that makes sense. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Do you want separate votes, or are people comfortable with, I would, seeing no other discussion, I would move approval of the fire budget as presented.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Roll call, Madam City Clerk?
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Beltrandi?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Clarity?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews King?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
I think he really already covered the ambulance, but I didn't want to.
Any other questions on the ambulance, ambulance fund?
I would just add one comment to the comments that you made in the beginning, and recognizing Frank. Not only, you know, budgetarily has it worked well for the city, but the level of service from the fire department and the ambulance has grown immensely in the last 20 years. It's, you know, full paramedic, a lot more, you know, trucks on the, so the level of service has also improved, which only happened because of, because of that vision. So thank you for being the shepherd of that vision. So with no other comments, I would move approval of the ambulance budget as presented.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Roll call, Madam City Clerk?
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
No.
Beltrandi?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Clarity?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews King?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief, for coming in.
Thanks, Chief.
And.
Thanks for having me.
Please send our regards and well wishes and thanks to the men and women of the Westfield Fire Department.
Absolutely.
Good job going on. Okay, so that concludes the budget reviews for tonight. Stand by for tomorrow. We're scheduled to be 6:00 PM, where and when and how, I hope, no.
My house, on the deck.
We'll be at the, at Bean's house.
On the deck.
On the deck. So. We are 6 o'clock, scheduled for 6 o'clock tomorrow.
I would move, oh, unless you have Councilor Harris to.
Councilor Harris?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Been made in second.
All in favor. All in favor.
All in favor. Our first.
Saved five minutes.
There you go. Good job, guys.